Call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, June 3, 2019, 6:30 PM. All members of the city council are present. Others include James Johnson, that's our treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The second item is to approve the minutes of May 20, 2019, and I would entertain a motion.
Prove.
Vote for May. Is there a second?
Second.
May is seconded to approve the minutes, and a discussion on the motion. Hearing those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Ayes have it. Motion through. The next is comments by members of the public. Looks like two people who wish to speak is regarding Mount Vernon Street. So we'll have the presentation and then I'll open it up to questions. The next one item is Route 191 slope remediation project schedule. Presentation, and we have Annabelle Dally, information consultant. Bruce Martin is here, and George Carpenter is here, and Kevin McClure. Hello? Okay, it's fine, okay. All right, we'll let you be it.
Sure, so like I said, I'm Bruce Martin with the agency of transportation in the roadway design group. We've been working on this project, Route 191, for many, many years, and it's actually coming to fruition now. Laura, if you want to talk. To give a brief part of project history, I was here back in February to get an overview of the project. So some of the product history is, in 1971 it was constructed, and immediately followed construction, we started seeing settling of the roadway itself. So we started to install some drainage systems of the slope, the bank, to relieve some water pressure in the slope itself. In 1973, some horizontal drains were installed, and from '71 to '76, they saw settlements of four inches on average. Continuing throughout, we had operations move four feet of pavement because every time the road would settle, just add more pavement on top of it, more pavement on top of it. Never fixed the problem, they're just patching it for the day, basically. So we started extensive, more extensive subsurface investigations in '89 and '91, and we created a counterburn, was supposed to basically stop the settlement from occurring. In 1996, a sinkhole developed because of a culvert that is buried about 30 to 35 feet underground on the roadway. It separated because the road kept shifting, and the pipe actually pulled apart. So from that point on, all they did was basically continue maintenance throughout. We thought it was best to begin a more in-depth geotechnical investigation, so inclinometers, posimeters, and monitoring wells were installed, which basically shows the deflection in the slope and shows like how it's shifting throughout, throughout time. And we came up with a recommendation in 2015 to install some wells at the bottom of the slope that will actually relieve groundwater pressure that is 120 feet below grade. So as you can see, it's been 40 years of failing conditions, so finally have come up with something that, after a lot of analysis, appears to be the issue. The main concern with this design is that we have this culvert that is 35 feet below grade, which has already failed, that we want to go back in and replace. So, it's like I said, it is extremely deep. The best way to do this, since it has already failed, it has failed initially and continued to fail throughout, is to actually go in, remove the culvert that is there, and put in a new culvert to replace this one. The best way to do this, since it has failed, is to do an open cut excavation, because we have trenchless alternatives. However, the slope is unstable as it is, so trenchless alternatives would be either drilling or be ramming a pipe through there. Doing that with an unstable slope is not ideal, so we're going to move forward with a open cut situation, which is going to have very steep slopes, it's going to be a very, very big hole, and this is the main reason why we're proposing to close the road, because for safety reasons, not only for construction, but for the traffic of the public as well. This is the pipe that we are proposing to replace, just to show it's very long and very deep, so to try to do this with keeping roadway construction, having roadway movement for vehicles throughout, would prove very difficult and, like I said, very, very unsafe. The wells that we will be installing will be down below the slope toward the abandoned power canal. And, so, project scheduled. We are here back in February to just get an information, give you an informational meeting, but now is really time to move forward. The project was advertised, JPC card was ordered, the project, and now that they have gotten ready, they are looking to move forward with the closure. So see some covering and detour, covering, construction relation to covering of the detour signs that will begin soon, it would say mid-June. Some work to begin out there, you know, in the month of June. However, they are not going to start the full closure until after the Fourth of July holiday, July 8th, that is when we're looking to close the road right now. It will be closed for six weeks, we have until August 23rd to have this closure in place, but from July 8th, I mean, we're looking at a month away, we are going to have this closure in place. Like I said, we have been informational beforehand, but we are, we are ready to go and get this project underway. The detour we are going, is going to be pretty basic, we're going to be utilizing Route 5 and 91, adds at least seven and a half miles onto the project, onto the route, so it's not that far, and the roadways themselves are in good condition to handle the extra traffic that we are going to be utilizing. So we do understand that any roadway closure is an inconvenience, but we are here for the safety of the traffic of the public and the safety of the contractors while they are working, and for that reason, it was the best alternative to move forward on this path, and like I said, we are, it's time now to start construction. So we do have some informational peeps, I think the next slide. Turn this over to Annabelle.
Hi, everyone, Annabelle Dally, I'm going to be the public information consultant on this project. So every week on Friday, we'll basically release an email blast to everyone who's interested, and it'll basically just give you an idea of what's going to happen the following week. In addition, we'll do traffic alerts, so when they decide to close down the road, you'll get an additional email saying this is the day it's happening tonight. And then same thing if they, when they open, if they open early, if they open on time, you'll get another email saying it is officially open, whether it's at, you know, midnight or 2:00 AM. You'll get an email, so in the morning, you'll know that 191 is back and running. We do have a project info email which is up there, it's also going to be on the fact sheets, I'm going to leave them here, so you guys can grab them, you can email that any time of day, goes directly to my cellphone. And then we also will have our project hotline, which is up there on the screen, free to call anytime during construction to get ahold of us if you have any questions or concerns. That's basically it. Do you have any questions? Close now?
We'll entertain questions now, we are...
Mr. Chris Roy from Newport Daily, so 27 is going to be totally closed, I thought when you hear February indicated that it might be open, at least to what Crawford Road or something, or did I, do I recall correctly?
No, you are correct, we are actually going to be closing it from Crawford, beyond Crawford Road.
Crawford Road down.
Yeah, and this is Clyde Street, or the street?
West Street.
Yeah, so you can use it to the local streets itself, but it's just in the middle, it's going to be closed, but we are going to be closing it from that point because there's no roads in there. So you can't access Crawford Road.
Mr. Mayor, when you say US Route 5, you mean like the Derby Road, and you said, you were saying for the road's in good shape, I didn't quite catch what you were talking about.
I was stating Interstate 91 and US 5, I don't know if there's another local term for that, but...
That's stretch 28?
That's Route 5, it's sometimes, it's a derby, it's a derby road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, the detour for the general public coming up 91 is to get to Derby exit, exit there, and come back down?
Correct.
It's just local knowledge that knows the other road, so it's not like all the Derby, all the interstate traffic is going to get off and go down the side streets?
No, we will not sign that at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you look at the Orleans exit as a temporary truck route for truck going, so they don't have to come all the way up and back into Newport?
We did not look into that.
I was just thinking, stuff coming south could get off there, rather than coming even any further north, and really, the traffic coming south from Canada, coming west from Island Pond, in that area, would probably end up using Route 5, not going down the interstate. I just don't know how much...
You mean coming south of 91?
Yeah, they would probably, they would come down Route 5 anyhow.
You'd have a going north. You would have a going north.
Right, I'm talking about going north, but to be signage so that they could get off at the Orleans exit, rather than coming all the way up.
Okay, we had no looked into that because we thought this was a closer route for them, so something we could notify the truck companies too.
Yes.
Which one?
No, you, Jennifer.
Okay, so I'm Jennifer Lefebvre, and I am a Mount Vernon resident. My husband was here a couple months ago asking about speed bumps potentially, I know it's only local traffic, but there's already quite a bit of traffic there, I have two small children getting in and out of vehicles, and I'm just wondering if, what the plan is, if there's additional traffic patrols, or if those speed bumps are going to happen, if there's any ideas from the city of what to do about, because that road is really narrow, so I think my neighbor here is likely asking similar questions.
So, I have our entire Public Works and Police and Emergency here tonight to make sure that everybody's getting the exact same information, and the first thing that I want to stress is that Mount Vernon Street, as Bruce had said and Melissa reiterated, is not an advertised shortcut. We think it's pretty reasonable to expect that the locals are going to use that, and we did acquire a speed cart, we do intend to put the speed cart there. We suspect that people who live on Mount Vernon Street are going to be hyper vigilant to speeders during this time, and that you're going to let the police department know.
Yeah.
And that's going to be very helpful. We do plan to have some extra patrols, we don't know what we're looking at yet, we don't know what kind of response we're going to see from the locals, but, you know, we're all making an assumption that people are going to be speeding up there. So we're doing the best we can within our capacity to be logical and smart about this. We're hoping that your neighbors will let us know, and we'll call the police when you see violators up there. So you can expect the speed cart, you can expect some extra patrols. I don't think we're going to move towards the speed bumps, that seems like kind of a big step when we don't know exactly what we're looking at. Speed bumps have some inherent problems, and they would end up being perhaps more costly than you would find in short-term convenience. So we're going to try the other strategies first, and I think that's probably the best way to do it. We're talking about a six-week timing, so we've got everybody on alert for that six weeks.
I have a question.
No.
Just, are you putting the sign on, I went up and down it over the weekend, just to get an idea, are you going to put the sign as a coming down from Derby? Because I know as it goes from 35 to 25, and is that straightaway before the curve? I didn't know where you were going to put the sign going up or coming down.
That's a question for Chief DeSanto.
Plan on monitoring it both ways, so it will depend.
Like move the sign maybe one day on one side and move it the other, the other day? I'm just getting, just curiosity, as far as...
Yeah, it will, yeah, it will depend on traffic flow, I mean, if we get complaints that the majority of the people are speeding coming downhill, we may leave it on the downhill side for an extended period of time, or we might just put it on the uphill side a few times, its deployment is based on current trend, not, not a set schedule.
Okay, great, I was just curious about that, after going up and down over the weekend, just to get an idea.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, this might be more of a suggestion, is if, if you have it available to maybe do a couple of weeks before or after, to get a baseline, to see what the change is, depending on the timing?
Yeah, it's not bad either.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
When we spoke about this in February, I left with the expectation that temporary speed bumps were going to be installed on Mount Vernon. So to hear that we're not considering that is disappointing.
I don't believe we ever committed to anything, I know that was an idea from Mr. Lefebvre, and we did look into it, and we never committed that we were going to do speed bumps. So if that was a message that came across, I don't know where it came from.
Because I know my interpretation was, we were going to look into speed bumps to see if it was feasible. That's how I looked, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's how I, that's how I interpreted it, we weren't committing to speed bumps at that time.
How costly are temporary speed bumps? Does anybody know? Tom, you want to take that one?
I've never really looked into them, to be honest, but you have two options, you either pave in one, and then if you want it out later, you cut it out and repave the road, or you pin them in, and I really, and just so everybody knows, Grace paving will be on your hill tomorrow morning to finish paving the hill. So if you pin them in, then you pull the pins out, you've got a hole, and somewhere down the road, you're going to have potholes growing, because you've got a hole in the ground, and in the wintertime, when the water gets in there, it freezes and thaws, it's going to pop it, and I would prefer not to, we're paving the road, we're going to have a nice new paved road, and I think we should just leave it up to law enforcement to be moderate to the speed.
Mr. Walsh. Hi, I was wondering about the cart, there's a location just above Herrick Street, that there's a sign there that says slow for children or something like that, half the letters are missing from it, but that corner right there is a blind corner just before Herrick Street, and people trying to pull into and out of Herrick Street are often confronted with someone speeding around that corner. And I know it might be helpful to have it at the bottom of the hill, on the top of the hill, but maybe at some point slowing people there. As well as at the bottom of Mount Vernon, there is a sign that there's an intersection coming up, and there's a light on that sign that's never been operational. A long-term solution too would be to have that light flashing, or whatever it does, it's like an orange light on top of the pole. And also, that corner, when you come down and you're turning onto Western Ave, is really ill-conceived. The speed coming around that corner, we pull out at the bottom of Herrick Street, and my children cross there as well, and you just can't see the car coming around the corner, and it's right there, it's on you. And they're going to be crossing all summer on their bikes and walking to go to the park. And really, that corner should be bumped out to slow traffic, making that sweeping arc there.
You mean at the bottom of Mount Vernon?
Yeah, as you're coming down, it sweeps to the right onto Western Ave, and it's really here.
Oh, no, no, I just had to get an idea.
That's okay, I, for you guys anyways, just threw some recommendations through that corner, but that's, you know, because it's a long-term solution.
I don't get one?
I, I'm sorry, some will share.
You know, the sad part about that intersection, it's not just coming down the hill, the cars coming across the Long Bridge, they don't have to slow down to make the corner, you know, they're going around the corner 40, 45.
Yes, and they, they're cutting that corner.
Years ago, there used to be an island that came out, and now, if anybody comes out of Clyde Street in order to see up Mount Vernon, you have to pull out almost a full car length, that's where the stop line is, in order to see if anything's coming down the hill. So it's not a, it's not a good situation there, and I can see that being a problem with the vehicles coming down Mount Vernon and the ones coming off of Long Bridge.
I was going to say, I'm sorry.
I think this should be labeled Clyde Street.
On the opposite side?
Other one is Western Avenue.
No, yeah, because see, here's, here's Railroad Square, Western Ave, that should be Clyde Street, right? Herrick is off of...
It's just around your corner.
Yeah.
Herrick is marked right.
So just for my own clarification, we're discussing two different issues here, we're happy about temporary closure of this, and what are we doing for protection for the children and motorists and stuff, and then we have long-term, what we really like to happen.
Yeah, and in the last, probably in the last six months, there are four new families that have moved into that section between Herrick Street and Western Ave with all the children, all in that small section, so there's going to be more children on that road, there's no sidewalks, so speeds are...
Thank you.
Your label's correct, I was getting, I was getting mixed up with Furrage Street, that connects right to Mount Vernon.
Oh, yeah.
I was getting, going to where Herrick is.
Google got it wrong, you know, it's...
Yeah, no, 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 I was just me thinking of the little street that comes up.
The Furrage behind the, yeah, and Herrick is on the other side.
Yeah, that's right, I was kidding, so it's okay.
Sorry, I just wanted a question, you're saying that exit 27 is going to be fully closed?
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke with that, we are going to keep it up into Crawford and Mount Vernon, and we'll be closing it from that point down.
Okay, but not for truck traffic?
Truck traffic should be detoured, yes.
So, any traffic counts as to what we might expect additional coming through?
What's going to be going to Mount Vernon, I don't know, we have total, like, I believe it's 3,300 vehicles per day that use 191. Hopefully, most of them are going to be seeing the sign and going, going up the exit to Derby. It's going, like I said, we're not going to be signing any, any local detours, so hopefully everybody's seeing the fact that it is closed at that point.
And that'll be both ways?
Correct.
So they'll be using Mount Vernon to access number one and reverse, coming off of 91 and detour down through...
The local traffic could, yes.
Mr. Mayor, are you going to have signs to alert the trucks not to use 27, or how are you, are you in force until they don't get down there and end up going on Mount Vernon Street or down Crawford Road instead of going up to 28?
We can notify the trucking companies, I believe they're, and has them on the list, they can all be notified that 191 is closed and to use exit 28. We put the signage on as well.
So you know, so, and I might ask him, because I don't know, so are you, so, you know, every trucking company that passes through there, passes through the city, or if it's a, in, a company that doesn't do business in town, or rarely does business in town? You know, official Montreal, Quebec City or something, or?
We go through the Vermont Trucking and Bus Association, so they, we go through the Vermont Trucking and Bus Association, and then they're, they have a woman named Lisa, and she sends it out to everyone that's registered with them, period, whether they drive through the area or not, just so they're aware. So she has her own distribution list that she's, you know, been collecting over the year, so she'll send it out to all of her...
Other drivers?
All of her drivers, yeah, that are registered in the entire state.
So they don't know ahead of time not to?
Yes, yes.
You have quite a distribution list, because I remember seeing it initially, crossing off people who aren't around anymore, and adding some to it, I remember seeing that.
We have our own as well, but yeah, she's a little bit more in touch and more in-depth with the trucking companies in general, so we do reach out to her, and she sends them off to her list as well, just in addition to ours.
Other questions, while we have the explanation?
I have one. So, I'm sure you've noticed that right off, they both exit, send exit 28, is that 127 or 28? There are so many potholes that you have to slow down to a very, very slow crawl to avoid damaging your vehicle. Are you aware of that? Could they be fixed, please? So at the very top of line, 91, right off of both exits, whether you're exiting south or north, there are so many potholes at that intersection, that section, right near both exits, that you really have to stop in order to not damage your car.
She's talking to a bridge.
The bridge.
The bridge, no.
I'll second that.
Western Ave, not the 27 one, yeah.
Oh, well, that's out of my purview for this, this project, it's part of a bridge project or paving project, definitely, I'm not sure, but it would not be fixed as part of this.
It's pretty urgent, so, it may not be your purview, but if you could share that, that's whoever's purview, it is under that.
This is off of exit 27, so?
Yes, you should check it out. It's pretty high.
Okay, yes.
Did you consider closing Mount Vernon except for local traffic? And, and that would put most, another group of people on the detour route.
Do we consider, we're not signing local traffic?
No, I meant our council, or...
That was not something that we considered, we still have to get vehicles up there, we have to get emergency vehicles, and there's a business at the top of the hill, so no, that was not something that we considered for this purpose.
But the business and the other thing you mentioned, their local traffic, I mean, they would be allowed to go up the road, and it would just, I mean, you're not going to catch everybody, and some people will still use it, but it'll discourage other people from using that road.
Well, I guess, then what's local traffic, is it somebody from Orleans who lives, who works a business here in town, are they local, or are they out of town, I mean, what?
No, I meant to Mount Vernon, it would be closed other than to Mount Vernon Drive.
Right, my question is, if somebody lives in Brownington, New Orleans, and they come up 91 to come to work in Newport, and they want to go down Mount Vernon Street, are they local traffic, or are they out-of-town traffic?
Well, that's an enforcement question, I'm just talking about putting up a sign.
Well, then, somebody has to enforce it if you put a sign up.
You know, it's hard to, a lot of the prison workers use Mount Vernon, they'll come down Mount Vernon and down Vernon Street, so you know, a lot of the, if I'm going up on the interstate, I go up Furnace Street and Mount Vernon, now living on the Glen Road is the quickest way to get up there. So I'd consider myself local traffic, you know, to go up there is my normal routine, you know, sometimes I come down that way, depending where I'm going in town. I think if they can limit truck traffic, they're doing a good thing. I think most of the people that travel into Newport are coming for work, you know, they'll come in in the morning, and they'll go home the same way at night, and they're actually doing it now, depending on which direction they're going when they hit the interstate. So, as far as people traffic, just general cars and stuff, I don't think you'll see a huge increase at those times of day, you know, coming to work, going home. To me, it's, it's probably one of the steepest streets in town, I don't know what the truckers think when they're going down that last grade, you know, and the one thing is, is that they don't use their engine braking, like everybody up in, on that side of town, but I think for what they're doing, I think they have a pretty good plan.
Other questions, comments? Let's hope, let's hope after 40 years, this is, this is affirmative, because...
Thank you.
45? I do remember when I was over, I think I was there for 15, because it was over.
So it has started, I think it's 27, 28.
They're going to be signed up.
Okay, next on the agenda is CSWD, mismanagement of Newport's recycling, glass, and pot boat, we have Pat Austin here, who will give us an overview. Next on the agenda is CSWD, uh, mismanagement of Newport's recycling glass and boat, we have Pat Austin here, who will give us an overview, um, that people have been following the news, it did make the news about how, um, basically all our recycled glass is not being recycled.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
I have to stand up one more.
Awesome, I'm here in the chair, I can help on the change all day. So my name's Pat Austin, President of Austin Rubbish and Haul Service, um, been in the trash and recycling business for over thirty-five years in the Northeast Kingdom, um, with the largest, um, collector of rubbish and recycling in the Northeast Kingdom.
Would you mind if you're either turning a bit or speeding up this?
So, in two thousand and twelve, they passed Act, Act one forty-eight, I'll give you an overview real quick of how and why we got where we are, and why the material from Newport goes to Chittenden's MRF. In two thousand and twelve, they passed Act one forty-eight, um, which banned, uh, serious materials and mandated some, um, some new infrastructure onto the hauler community. Since then, there's been, um, a lot of, um, a lot of testimony, a lot of information that's come out to try to adjust the law to make it a little more powerful. Two thousand and fifteen, the law took effect, so in two thousand and twelve, when the law was passed, CSWD had already had, when I say CSWD, that's Chittenden Solid Waste District, um, they had the, a MRF that sorts the recycled material, that's called a MRF. And they already had a curbside, um, collection mandate on the haulers, so if you picked up solid waste in Chittenden County, you had to pick up, um, recycling in the head of facility, you didn't deal with it. So the law was modeled after the the infrastructure that they put in place, basically, the the curbside option, um, and that that curbside option is what's created what you hear called single stream recycling. We have a district in the area that the facilities collect material source separated, um, so basically the the residents bring the material in, they put it in their own, whether it's glass, tin, plastic, paper. So with the, um, with the new requirement for the parallel collection of recycling and trash, um, mandate through Act one forty-eight, that's what has forced the single stream recycling. So basically, when a hauler collects recycling and ball, you, we have to do it all co-mingled together, that's the only way to really do it in any volume. The, they make trucks years ago, they used to try using, they had individual bins for the source separated stuff, but you'd have one bin that would fill up, but you'd have to go all the way to the disposal facility, and the other bins weren't, and the trucks just weren't really, um, user friendly. So the Northeast Kingdom, we're, we are the furthest away from the MRF, um, and we're kind of cornered in the corner of the state where we can't really, um, easily, e-commerce doesn't go across the border easily, right? And and New Hampshire is so far out, you know, out into nowhere, basically, out on, on, for a majority. So when the, when the law took effect, the haulers had to pick it up and, um, you, you guys already had a facility down here that was collecting it, and that material was also going to the, um, the facility. So in two thousand and fourteen, I had figured out that there was no infrastructure for the hauler community in the Northeast Kingdom, um, the haulers would have to, uh, pack it, haul it two and a half hours one way across the state, which is really not a feasible way to do it. So I started looking into where we could market this material, and I I did find a market in Canada that was going to buy the material from us. And that all fell apart when they realized it was glass in the material, because most states don't ban glass, if they do, they do not have it added into their recycle stream because it can be added. So in two thousand and fourteen, I figured this out, I started testifying, I thought, you know, surely I could just go down and tell these people that the problem with this system for our area and they'll understand and correct it. Immediately, I come up against resistance from Chittenden Solid Waste District and and immediately figured out who the legislators were listening to, and the this jurisdiction falls under the Agency of Natural Resources, so it'd be the Senate and House Natural Resources Committee when we're down there giving testimony. And and that's, that's common, I guess, for politics, and Burlington seems to give a weighted, a weighted decision. So every year, I kept, um, trying to make them understand what the problem was with glass, why there was a reason to remove this glass, it's severely contaminating our recycling, um, and it really came to a head when China stopped accepting basically our trash and bottlenecked up the the system and tanked rates. So in two thousand and twelve, when they passed the law, CSWD was charging five dollars a ton, and the day the law took effect in, um, in July, they increased their rates to twenty-one dollars a ton, um, the day it took effect. You know, I I think back and I'm like, I was trying to make changes, they didn't want to do this big increase until it all kind of took effect, you know, I'm looking for a big picture. So, um, in two thousand and sixteen, we had, um, Senator Rogers, um, we worked, um, with the haulers and and the the Northeast Kingdom District had set up a committee to study some of the changes we needed for Act one forty-eight, try to get a specific bill on, on, you know, go for legislators. And, um, so Senator Rogers introduced a bill in his committee, he's on the Senate Natural Resources Committee, and it was S two eighty-five, um, that bill would have taken all glass containers and removed it from the recycle stream and added it to the deposit bill, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't have, um, removed the ban on that material, it wouldn't have landfillled the material, it would have still kept it segregated out, but by putting in the bottle bill, it separates it by color, and that's how you get the most value out of glass. That made it out of the Senate Natural Resources Committee favorable, um, and made it over to the House Committee, and then CSWD came out and lobbied against our complete bill, and every, there was thirteen provisions in this bill, and every provision that Jen Holliday from CSWD lobbied against, that they said they didn't support, was removed. And and the two things that she said she supported were added, which is typical. About three weeks after this, she she was successful in getting the glass removed, they get this violation that you guys have a copy of from the Agency of Natural Resources, that they've been stockpiling their glass on their closed landfill, all the glass that comes out of their MRF. Since as far as we can figure, back to like two thousand and three, which was years before even the the process that developed Act one forty-eight, I mean, these, this was not, this was a known problem. Yeah, I was, I was all upset, you know, say, at least, um, and and it's really, it really seems to have gotten a little bit, um, more blatant in everybody's face when you realize the scope of what they were doing. Every month, they were reporting to the Department of Environmental Conservation, much like Laura has to, they have, you have to report what materials diverted, um, from your waste stream, um, what companies divert what, where it goes, that type of thing. So this entity was taking in the whole northern part of the state's single stream recycling, and they were diverting their glass there and telling the department that they were using it in local projects. I, I, my opinion is they got away with this because they're so closely entrenched with Agency of Natural Resources, the people at the head of Natural Resources have sway these policies. So, um, what I've come to you guys for is a couple of things, is I wanted to explain to you, um, the severity, what's going on, and and, um, you know, you guys have haulers in your community that have to adhere to the, your solid waste district rules, um, and all them haulers haul and pick up the material from the residents, which is the right thing to do, to divert this material, and we haul across the state and pay this high rate, and and you have your facility that you pay this high rate to take it to, and, you know, if you think about it, not, not just some of the bottles that were collected in Newport City are in this pile, but every single glass container that your residents ever washed out and sent through the stream of recycling is in this pile of glass. I have some pictures here that you can look at, this is the, actually, the, this, this is a picture of the glass from Google Earth, and so CSWD has come out in the media saying that they're using, they were using this glass in a bank project and they had approval for it. Now, this pile of glass looks like, um, it might be just flowing down the hill, um, the edge of that little road that you're seeing in that picture is the top of the landfill, the closed landfill they have down there, and they've just been, for years, I mean, there's vegetation growing on this glass, um, it's just migrating down the hill, and it's actually almost reached, um, there's a property that, um, the state had bought for the Circ Highway that goes right through the center, and it's almost reached that property. So this was brought to light from, I think, some people that had discovered that this was a problem and that they had, and that they were, um, mismanaging and misleading everybody in the state. I mean, at the end of the day, they, they enter into a, a moral contract with solid waste districts such as yourself to deal with this material. If you look at this picture, you can see right here, this is the, their whole property, this is the glass. And this right here is, I only have one picture of this, I'll pass it out, but this is, so another thing that they've been claiming that they don't agree with this violation is that they have met the PGA spec, which is what they call processed glass aggregate spec, which is a less than one percent contamination in a certain granular size material, so it can be used in, um, like, subbase, um, for roads, parking lots, I mean, this material would be good for that, at that spec, it's the worst thing you'd ever use to stabilize a bank, right? But this is, this is a pile with their tape, what's coming out of their, their, their MRF, and you can see the plastics and stuffs that's that's in there.
So it's not just glass, then?
No, it's severely contaminated, um, and they just recently spent, I guess, about seven hundred thousand dollars to clean up this glass to try to get it to be usable in other projects. I guess the reason that I'm asking you guys to support the letter that we've put, that I put in front of you to, um, send a strong message, one, to to Chittenden Solid Waste District, that, um, they need to be upfront, people are, and 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 other districts, that if there's a material that is, doesn't have a place to be diverted to, we can't just divert it and stockpile it on the ground. You know, I know I work a lot with with Laura on some of the requirements that come, that are coming up, and one of the requirements that's coming forward is that every solid waste district would have to have a place to collect sheet rock. Some people may say a dense area may may need that, the the problem is, we've met with the companies that are going to accept this material, there can't be any paint, there can't be any mud, it can't be, it's only clean sheet rock, and it has to be dry. So if they get, if if CSWD and the agency get their way on this provision, you'll have to have some sort of way to collect this sheet rock, you can charge for it. But the only people in construction that are going to utilize that as a resident would be somebody that decided to sheet rock their own bathroom, and and after you, what you ripped out can't go there, only the cutoff pieces when you re-sheetrock it. So, you know, you, we need to somehow make the agency and CSWD understand that, you know, at what cost do we do to to divert the least amount of material? We have very good diversion rates in Northeast Kingdom, Newport City has a very good diversion rate, ironically, CSWD does not. We we have good diversion rates in Northeast Kingdom because of poverty, because we we just reuse things that other people wouldn't, I'm not saying that everybody does, but, um, you know, if, if, in in going forward with these policies, that Newport should should have a a say with, um, whether it's your legislators. I I'm not against any diversion, um, policies that have been put in place, I I, we divert more material than any other hauler. But to find out that, when they got their violation, their answer was, um, and you guys, the people that have been on the council for a while might remember that when I come to twenty last time, their answer was that they needed to increase their rates at their MRF. So at the time, they were charged at twenty-one dollars a ton for everybody, and they decided they were going to increase it, if you come from CSWD within their district, they were going to go from twenty-one dollars a ton to twenty-five, and if you come from anywhere outside their district, you're going from twenty-one to fifty. So I get this letter and I'm thinking, they just got this violation, they have no, now they're going to have to pay to deal with their glass like they were supposed to, or landfill it, um, and this was their answer, that it's everybody else's problem, um, we're going to double charge them, even though we are hauling the furthest to get it there. So I I responded with a, um, request from the commentary select board to impose some fees on on them, and it was ironic, Laura went to the meeting, Kathy Jameson from the Agency of Natural Resources and Jen Holliday, I mean, Sarah Reeves, the district manager from CSWD came together, the the agency defended her, she had, she couldn't answer any of the questions that Laura had about the way they posed their budgets. In my opinion, CSWD is the most corrupt organization that I've ever worked with in solid waste in the past thirty-five years, and the fact that they are swaying legislation is very dangerous, and and if something doesn't change that, whether it's through a a strong letter from from the council or legal action, um, the 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 Northeast Kingdom District at their last meeting encompasses forty-nine towns, and they voted unanimously to seek legal, um, any and all legal options that we can pursue against CSWD. You know, I would think at the very least, you should be able to recover the fees that you paid on all the glass that went down there.
Oh, yes, and then we just got another letter dated May twenty-ninth, they're increasing it by ten dollars a ton. In the packet, yeah.
Now they're taking.
Here they are, not even recycling the glass, and now they're increasing it to ten dollars a ton.
And and now they're taking their glass to Whitcomb, um, they've supposedly cleaned it up, I don't, I'm not a chemist, but they say it needs to spec now, but now he's generating this massive pile of glass. And so, so that's going to have to come to a head at some point, I mean, I'm not, I was never opposed to diverting glass, we had a better system and and everybody involved from here, and and even a lot of legislators knew it, but it was not going to financially bode well for CSWD, because if you really think about it, if we were able to create infrastructure in the Northeast Kingdom that didn't have to go there, that would financially impact their operations, right? Glass is the heaviest thing in it, they didn't have a problem with glass, they testified over and over they didn't have a problem with glass, now I know why they didn't have a problem with glass. Ironically, there's two facilities in the state, one's in Rutland and one's in, in Chittenden, and, um, the one in Chittenden's owned by the Chittenden District, the one in Rutland's owned by Casella, and Casella used to send all their glass by rail out of state and pay the company to take it, and the company had contacted us, says, we don't want your glass anymore, just whatever, you know, and so they had actually requested to to use it in subbase roads in a landfill, which is not really landfilling it, it's just other material, it doesn't need to be hauled in to do that same process, and they they approved it for a couple of months and then denied it and asked them to to find it, you know, to spend the money, clean up, figure out another avenue, but the other MRF was doing this, it's, it's really, um, what concerns me the most about this situation is they're looking at, they say the way you figure this fine is the cost of business savings, so basically, that stuff is solid waste, it would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars plus trucking a ton, they're looking at over a ten million dollar fine, if they get that ten million dollar fine, they're going to pass through fees at this MRF, so if this was a private company in oh-three, oh-four, they would have been called to task on this, it would have been dealt with, being a public entity, I mean, so so they had to hire a private trucking company to move this glass because Casella processes all their material at their MRF, but they don't market it, and Casella has solid waste permits, so you can't haul solid waste and dump it in an uncertified facility, so they had to hire somebody that didn't have solid waste permits for years to move this glass. You know, and if you had six thousand tons of material you couldn't move, don't you think you'd have a conversation with either your board, there's nothing documented, they talked to their board about it? They have an organization that's called the District Managers Association, which is an organization of all the district managers that get together and meet once a month, and they're telling me that they've never, they knew nothing about this glass, I don't personally believe that, but if you had this much material, you think you would talk to your counterparts about, like, you know, we got a problem? Or if there's policy being put in front of the state saying we might be able to fix this, and think you'd say, yeah, we've had a problem with glass for a while, you know, and it's, that's why I feel that the the people at the top are so corrupt and so driven in one one direction that they can't see the bigger picture, and and so I, um, I'm supportive of the letter, um, that that I've asked you guys to support, it it really is just asking for, uh, you know, an explanation. I I got a feeling they're probably not going to give you one, um, and then that would be up to you guys, if you would like to pursue a little more, and and I mean, I would think at this point in the state, we're at least looking to tell them that they can't take glass until they can prove that they're doing something.
I'd like to see a refund, if you can figure out what the weight is, if no glass is heavy.
There is a formula that you could use to 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 back out from the total tonnage that you ship, to back out those glasses, and and you know, the same token for the for the haulers, you know, it's unfortunate, I mean, I, when I was setting this infrastructure up, I ordered a bunch of stickers for my garbage cans, and they came and it was, they had, I wanted to make sure there's clear pictures of them, anybody, anybody that has our service has seen them, and they came and and there was no glass in the picture. And I called the company, I'm like, what's going on, there's no glass, they said, nobody does glass, why would you have glass in your picture? So I had to buy five hundred more stickers, and I'm thinking back going, why didn't I set up an infrastructure that didn't have glass, and we wouldn't have everybody doing this? I mean, I, you know, how many conversations I've had with residents, like, yeah, you gotta wash the peanut butter out of that jar or or throw it away, no, I'll put it through my dishwasher, so all the energy being spent on this glass for this purpose is is really, really disheartening, and and it's just wrong, and so that's why I just felt compelled to come speak to you guys. So that's why I just felt compelled to come speak to you guys. If you have any questions.
Questions, council members?
Yes. So in districts where they sort, where does their recycling go?
So when they, when you keep it source separated, it's actually a more valuable material. So everything goes to different places. Their cardboard might go to a place in Canada, their paper might go to another place. Glass, though, is still a problem because they don't sort it like color so much at the facilities. So they were taking it to, I think it's NARA in New Hampshire. It's in Littleton, New Hampshire, but they, they stopped accepting it. And I'm, I'm working on that right now because I'm trying to figure out what they were doing with it. And they reported they accepted no other state glass last year. This glass is in limbo for some reason. But now it's going to Canada supposedly. But we're, they're still paying here. Whereas if you could imagine the deposit system, it's already in place, right? You add, you put a nickel on it. And our bill proposed, it was ironic, it didn't propose just putting a deposit on a glass soda bottle or a wine bottle or beer bottle. It was any glass container, spaghetti jar, you know, and so the wine, beer industry did come out against it because they didn't want to put the deposit on it. And the retail, the roche was like, well, we don't, well, then, then don't put it in glass. Well, but glass is a better product. Well, it is, so you should have to pay a premium to use, to be able to process that material after, right? I mean, it's, it's getting crammed into the waste stream or, or dumped over a bank. So it, you know, it is a problem. It's, I mean, don't get me wrong, beer's better than glass, but it is a problem. And there's a deposit on it, on the beer, right?
Just by a cane.
Yeah, that is one, right? Ironically, the last time I heard from Jen Holliday from Chittenden Solid Waste District, when she testified last, she said that she would support an all glass bottle bill if they could look at the whole bottle bill because they would really like to see the aluminum removed from the bottle bill so that they could get it in their MRFs because it's more valuable. It's the most valuable metal in the recycle stream. So it's just like really a self-serving policy. I mean, it's not, it, it's, it's always about the, the revenue for, for CSWD and, and less about the policy statewide. The ironic, the ironic thing about this whole process is that they could pass a policy in their district and implement any of this. It doesn't have to be the statewide policy. And I'm hopeful, and Senator Rogers is definitely going to be on it next year, I'm hopeful that they're, they're, they're supposed to be taking up glass in the Senate Natural Resources Committee as soon as they convene next year because this was discussed in their committee and it's too big of an issue to deal with right now. Okay, we'll take it up next year.
Other questions from any of you?
Then I did have a vote. I'm happy to be signed a letter of the council.
Oh, so this is the letter that we're talking about?
Yes. Yeah, this is the letter. That would go to the Chittenden Solid Waste District with copies to the A and R, all their board members, natural resources. It's all the CBO who would get copies of the letter. So I think, I think a letter is warranted in this situation, especially knowing that none of our glass has been recycled.
I would just like to know what they, you know, if they did use it in some local projects or what it could be used for. And, you know, I mean, and to be honest, I'm probably going to be looking into some broadening a little bit, but what, what, what is being done with this material? Just because an entity like CSWD sends it to market in another state, if that, that company might just burn it in a burner plant or push it over a bank, is that really what we want for the valuable resource that we're, we're capturing out of the waste stream? And I think that's something that I'm going to try to get the state legislators to require of A and R, you know? You can at least follow the materials and say, you know, what's happening over there? Is this a viable vendor or not, you know?
I just see like, you know, I trot down to the recycling center every Saturday morning and it's a big deal. And, but I don't really feel good about it because I really think it just goes on a boat to, you know, some third world country and gets dumped somewhere. I think the percentage of it that actually gets recycled is probably pretty small. But I do it, I bring my recycling.
I think the paper products are pretty well captured. And the metal products are pretty well captured and the plastic. Glass, it, it crushes up into everything else. I mean, the metal's easily pulled out with magnets, right? So they're gathering that and it's, they're, they're reselling that. I can tell you anything that goes, and I'll speak for myself, anything that goes into our trucks goes to a recycle site. And I know that there's, and that is my biggest concern of this whole process, this whole problem that CSWD's been doing materials. I'm petrified that the general public is going to get this perception that solid waste hollers are just throwing this material away.
Well, I don't think the hollers are doing it now at all.
No, no, but now, now there's a question on where it's going, right? And, and that's one of the reasons I wanted a letter to go, hopefully get a response from them saying, this stuff is being dealt with correctly, this is what we're doing, we can't speak about before. But, you know, for the media, I, glass still is banned from the landfill, still has to go into the recycle stream and we're still taking it. And, and this is the only place that we can take it. But, you know, there's a problem, it's driving the cost of the system so high that people can't afford it. And, and that's their mentality, just make it, you know, it doesn't matter, it's banned, right? It's banned, it has to go to a facility. And the next thing that's coming to place is this compost, right? There's banning it, there's no facilities. Well, Brooklyn's got one, right? And so it just, for, for areas like this, we need to sustain costs in a way, if our diversion's so good already, what, at what cost to get to the little pieces of diversion and what makes sense? And you, Laura can tell you how hard it's been to get variances from the agency when the legislators aren't in place. So it, it might be worth having some discussions in the off season on, on pursuing, you know, pushing on the legislators a little bit.
So they, I'm just thinking, so they, so this glass, which is, was contaminated with all that plastic, you, you have, it's almost like you need to have a separate bin just for the glass and then it could go over there or are there any facilities in Vermont that actually crushes it to make like a road base? Do we have anything like that in Vermont? This would be ideal, I would think for, kind of like, I don't know, I'm not an expert, maybe Tom is, but I don't know, make it pulverize it like a sand so you wouldn't have to truck it in sand? I don't know. Glass is sand, it would just eat it up or however many degrees.
That's what CSWD has just done is they put in this new machine that brings it down to that PGA spec. The reason the trans and, and people like that aren't using it is because there's no engineering spec that's been put out for them to use it, like how much of it they can use and where they can use it, right? And, and from what I've seen, they're not really interested in the product. And CSW and A and R keep using that as, oh, this is an option, this is what we're going to do. There was a company, Gravel, that was going to start up in St. Albans that takes the glass and makes, can't remember what it, what it was they did with it, but they were trying to get a vague grant from the state and they didn't get it. So they pulled out one somewhere else. So no, there's nobody that really processes glass in the state.
Of course, if there's no spec and you put it into a road bed, we have what happened to I-91.
Yeah. And, you know, and see, when you have a material like that, there's a lot of other concerns that come in. I mean, what is in it? Is there, is there asbestos, is there PFOAs, is there, you know, I mean, what, to what extent, you know, you gotta have some testing on the material before we just spread it everywhere, right? Unless you're CSWD, you can just, just dump it over the bank, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions from council members?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you said CSWD is a public entity, right? So the city of Burlington is making money from all of this or?
CSWD is their own municipality. They have their own charter. They operate as a municipality, which is a bit more of a problem for me. And so, just like the solid waste district here is, is a municipality. You guys are a solid waste district within your municipality, right? But they, like CSWD, that's all they are, is, is a municipality for solid waste.
They'd be the equivalent to Northeast Kingdom's solid-
Yeah.
Like the one that covers Lelandville, Derby. They're part of that district. So they're, they are a municipality.
Same thing, they're on the board there and we have a, they have, we have a charter and, and, you know, anything we need, you want to make changes, you have to go to the legislators. So they're an operating municipality.
Any other questions from council members?
I guess I have one more.
Yeah, no, go ahead. No, it's good.
In an ideal world, what would recycling look like in Vermont? In your environment?
That's a big question. It wouldn't have glass in it. See, there's some different infrastructures in place, like, so for, for residents in, in your municipality, the city of Newport, if you have a holler picking up your trash, it's against the law to not have them pick up the recycling. It's the biggest problem we have with this law. People don't, if they want to take a facility, they say, I'm going to opt out. You can't do that by law in the city of Newport. People do it. In, in the Northeast Kingdom District, we have lobbied for and we, we were successful back in 15 to get an exemption for the hollers that they could opt out of the service. That being said, Derby pretty much doesn't, the hollers don't really adhere to it. It's more for, I mean, if you think about the district, I mean, it covers Ferdinand, UTG, I mean, areas that is, you're not going to, you just wouldn't have infrastructure, you know? So the, I think, I mean, of course, I'm biased, I'm not a child holler, I would say that the, the private industry would be better served to take over the whole infrastructure. These facilities, like you guys have down here, are pretty costly and they compete directly with Act 148, basically, you know, that they take material for free. We're required by law to provide the service. They can't obviously do it for free. So if people opt out, what do you do, right? Same thing, it gets a little more trickier in the, in the district over there because they fund them facilities on a tax on, on, on hollers. So it even, if you ask me what recycle looked like in the state of Vermont, it wouldn't have glass in it. And the facilities would be funded by the people that use, you know, like through a membership or something like that. Most other states don't have solid waste districts. It's a level of governance that just creates this type of thing. You know, if, if this company was to be run as a profit, like, like it is, it is a for-profit company, I mean, it's a municipality, but it's got plenty of profit. They wouldn't have made these judgment calls, right? They would have, whether they increased the rate or, or tried to change the policy, they wouldn't have gone about it this way as like, we're above the law. So that's why I think that the private industry should be in, in charge of that because they can't really regulate very well against municipalities.
I know it's a convenience not to sort, but the best would be to sort everything like we used to. When recycling first started, we, we sorted everything. And then we had the bins, well, actually, we had the bins at the recycling place where we had to put the plastic, you had to put, well, cardboard, cardboard's already separated, but, but the plastic and boxboard, where we don't have to separate it now, back then we had to. And I think that was the ideal, in my mind, for truly having a pure stream for-
We used to do it in Morgan. Morgan had their own facility that accepted trash and it was mandatory recycling back in, I think, '90. They passed it. And, and so we'd get to the dump of their truck and we'd unload the garbage by hand. But then we had to take the, the recycling and rip each bag open and put it in the bin. It took me twice as long to unload the recycling as it did the trash. So if you think about like on a scale, we did it for that municipality at the time. And it's ironic, when, when, when Act 148 took effect, this, this tells you real quick of the leniency the agency has had for the Northeast Kingdom. When it took effect, they, one of the things was that you had to do unit based pricing, so you have to charge for what you take, whether it's by the bag, by weight or by the container size. But Morgan residents were able to bring the trash to their facility, so they weren't, it was free to bring there. And the state says, you can't do that anymore. You have to charge them. We've been doing this for years. Their diversion rate was at less than one pound per person per day and the state's goal is 2.69 pounds per person per day. The agency forced the town clerk to start selling bags to the residents or they had to close their facility. And we, we, I brought them the numbers, I testified, I, I bandaged them, like, it just makes no sense. They can't get any lower. They're the lowest in the state, no matter, it's a law, we're against legislators. So when policies like this happen, I think the Northeast Kingdom needs to kind of support each other and, and try to make them understand that we're not going to just watch this happen. I don't know what we can do, but if we all get together, there's something.
Okay. Any other questions from council members on this? Nope, no, I didn't know, I just wanted-
I'll think of probably 20 more once you leave.
That's fine. If you ever, you guys want to call me anytime, my office will give me a message.
I did have on here to vote on allowing me to sign the letter to send off. So I guess at this time, if the council chooses, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to have Paul sign, have mayor sign the letter for the Chittenden Solid Waste District.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Made and seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, would like to have a copy of what you're signing in the packet from Ms. Austin.
I really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me. I was, I was going to talk when I left, but-
It was informative.
If you have any questions, feel free to-
Is that the whole packet?
Do you want to give them the whole packet? Here's the letter.
I can give, I'll give them the whole packet. Yeah, Chris, you can have my whole packet.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Chris, you might want to get one of these guys and that would be the contact for the-
I do not, thank you.
Got my eye on it.
When it gets, when the pile gets thin enough, I'll be on it.
Well, let's, we could move on because the next item is pretty straightforward. The next item was the Wright salvage yard permit in vote. It was requested at a meeting to have the zoning administrator, Charlie, to look into the Wright salvage yard. And I think he gave it a pretty thorough report. Yeah. And so at this time, we would need a motion to approve the certificate for the location of the salvage yard and then we all sign it after. Motion's made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Did Chris give a copy of those on?
I gave him my packet.
And it's on, it's also on our, our-
Give it to Laura after.
Okay. Very good. We'll move on. Mr. Johnson, do business?
Yeah. I've got a request for NIOS funds. I'll pass it down to me too, it is, meets, he's eligible, meets the requirements. He's had it before. Of course, I might get it twice in a five-year period. He's met that.
Sergeant, he's, they can have it twice in a five-year period and it's already been given twice or it hasn't already?
No, he's had it before.
Oh, okay.
He only get it twice in a five-year period, but he's got enough years to pass.
Okay.
He can get it again.
What motion?
Motion been made to approve the NIOS fund request. So a motion was made, is there a second?
One second.
Made and seconded to approve the Niles fund request. Any discussion? And hearing them, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Other new business, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I do, I have six. Requested a malt and business spirits or liquors. This is for wow, Wendy's and Waterfront. They've got one here for each week. Six of them, so you have to, you need to approve them all in one whack or one at a time. Your choice. Must be a liquor department requesting that, so you get a hundred and twenty bucks out, I guess.
That's a requirement of the state, evidently.
Separate events.
Separate events.
Those are all the same basis, it's a different week. The carbon copy is the first one, just.
Do we need to, do we all?
Five thirds of water, so.
Do we just have a motion or do we all have to say, just a motion?
So a motion for a mall, sorry.
Let them look at them quick.
Question. So those are, that's in agreement with the state? So the state's allowing, or P G S is allowing, um, basically retail sales on the green space?
My understanding from Chris Colas, they've allowed a waiver for the ability to sell liquids. So that was something to engage directly with them.
So we would need a motion to approve the request for the outside consumption permit?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Uh, to approve the outside consumption permit for wow, Wendy's and Water.
Oh, sorry.
I have to carry, carry with permit, sorry, carry with permit. And made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Other new business, Mr. Johnson?
No, I have it.
Mr. Charman, any new business? Any new business?
I've got some new business. We received today the quote for locking in oil for next year. It's actually ten cents cheaper than what we were paying last year per gallon from Fred's. Propane is the same price and, um, oil is ten cents cheaper. And basically it would be locking in oil at two dollars forty-nine, two dollars forty-nine cents. And then propane at a dollar forty-five. In the past, I know we've gone out, two or three years in a row, we went out and asked all the local dealers. The only one that would actually quote on it would be Fred's. No one else would quote any type of price on the oil. And Fred's does offer one thing good too, is Fred's is there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for city, for city, you know, boiler issues and they've been here. So less, so we would need a motion to approve, because you got to lock it in. As he said, turmoil going on in Orlando right now could change oil overnight. So he said it would be better to lock it in, which I would agree because one year we didn't. One year, years ago, we didn't lock it in. By the time, the one meeting to the next meeting, it went up like fifteen cents, something like that. So we would need a motion to approve this, if you so choose. Some motion made, is there a second?
One second.
Seconded, discussion? Maybe I could get that for my house. No, that's a good price.
I'm eyeing the propane.
Oh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. I still use my weight pellets. Okay, that's all I had on new business. Any new business?
No.
Mr. Ross, new business?
All right.
Miss Penny, new?
No.
Okay, move on, old business. Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Charman, old? Is there one, any old business?
Question. Probably most people saw that the Downtown Development Organization put out a, a job, whatever. A job ad for people to apply to be the, um, economic development person. The one thing I didn't see in the information is, is it full-time or part-time?
That's negotiable. They put the price up there and, or the budget is what they put out there and then they put something in there called flexible schedule.
Uh huh.
I think it's right next to the amount. And that was deliberate to leave it open so that people would ask those kinds of questions. We didn't want to prohibit someone who's very high-end from applying. At the same time, we didn't want to prohibit someone who's a fresh graduate from applying as well. So good catch. It's strategic. Hopefully, hopefully it'll be a good pool. The job has been changed from the recruitment that we did in two thousand eighteen. So, um, we were optimistic. You know, we've circulated it in the media. I think it's on Indeed and, and with U V M and then State College, Johnson State College. There were some new websites that I was unfamiliar with, but I know that those three were specifically listed. So fingers crossed.
And it's going to Mike Welch?
Um, he's the contact person. Yep. And the deadline is, I believe it's the twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday. So if you know people, encourage them.
Great.
Yeah.
Other old business?
No.
No. I don't have any old business, any old business? Anything?
No.
All right. And the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Here on the council room, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. To adjourn? Made, seconded.
I'll start from there.
Discussion, then all those in favor say aye. Opposed, ayes have it, we are adjourned.